The New Britain Board of Education, providing students with a high-quality education.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, March 7th, 2022, the New Britain Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Reyes, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its manifold blessings, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you see all of them? Ms. Bill Sanders, come on. Here. Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C.
Yo.
Ms. Monica Dawkins. Here. Mr. Anthony Kane with a K.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Marino.
He's here.
He stepped out, right?
Yep.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santana.
Here.
We have a forum. We do have meditation. If we could just keep Ukraine in our minds when we do this meditation. Thank you. All right, we have public participation tonight. First up, we have Nalia Chah. Najla, Najla.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our Arabic community. They are grateful forever to Ms. Sarah, and they wanted me to be up here to say thank you and to the change that you brought for them. Actually, I remember prior to 2009, we, for our community, they were struggling, and you noticed that they were absent from our schools, from events, from in the public, and you took a step and you hired for them an ESL class, which took place at Jefferson FRC back in 2009, I believe. They wanted to say thank you for that because you advocated for girls especially to attend school. As you know, our Arabic community sometimes struggle with given privilege for girls to attend school. Usually, it is a privilege to them, and it's not a right, and that's inside their homes. So, thank you. Today, we have girls who attend college, universities. We have girls that attend New Britain High School. If it wasn't for you, Ms. Sarah, we would not be here today. Thank you so much for all you did. I know you advocated for them. You brought to them, you and you met with the parents, in particular with the fathers, to encourage them to let their girls attend school. We did not have girls in middle school or even in high school. Because of you, today, there is a big change. We have women working who speaks Arabic. We have them in our school. They're attending all events almost, and that shocks me. And if it wasn't for you, this would not happen. So, thank you so much for all you did.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Beckfield.
Oh, well, I apologize. I thought that was a sign-up sheet. So, but I am here on behalf of Sandra Sanford. I am here on behalf.
My microphone's not on.
It's not on. I can, I'm pretty loud. We'll come back to this later, but I apologize. I literally thought it was a sign-up sheet. But I am here on behalf of the MBHS Nav Academy Advisory Board, introductions and presentations that's under Presentations C with Sandra Sanford. Apologies. But hello, everybody.
Xavier Bryant.
She also signed up on the sheet. Her name's Augustina. We're just here together.
Okay.
Well, my name is Xavier. This is Augustina, and we're both students from New Britain High School speaking on behalf of Claudia Lutinsky. Dear members of the New Britain Board of Education, I am Claudia Lutinsky, a junior at New Britain High School, and I'm using my voice to express the voices of the other students in my school community. We discovered last month that the decision was made to change our daily schedule for the 2022-23 school year to a block schedule format, and that new information led to many questions.
I am Augustina, a sophomore at the high school, and I'm also speaking on behalf of Claudia Lutinsky. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I'm not able to attend this meeting in person, but I've decided to make sure that this is announced and to write this statement so our voices are heard. I learned during the COVID-19 school year of 2020 to 2021 that it is troublesome for me to sit in one classroom all day. When the students were informed that block scheduling had already been decided by school administration, I created this petition and asked my classmates for their opinion on block scheduling. Some say that block scheduling may help by allowing our students to stay in class with fewer opportunities of transitional time in the halls between periods. However, many students say that having block scheduling can cause them to lose focus and induce anxiety when the students cannot sit for 90 minutes at a time in the same classroom. Some students will become a disruption in classrooms for these reasons.
In addition, with block scheduling, absences become a bigger challenge to make up assignment. For one absence, having missed basically two classes of the instruction, catching up with the teachers can be very difficult and cause a student to fall further back and again, add more anxiety. This past year has been challenging, and we are finally getting back to a new normal with our classes, our teachers, and our friends. Changing our daily schedule will be another adjustment that many of us feel is unnecessary and will create further stress as we begin the next school year with even more changes. On behalf of the 500-plus students who signed this petition, I respectfully ask that the Board of Education review this decision, and this time includes our considerations. At this change will impact us the most. Thank you.
Do you have copies?
Will be good.
Okay. Angelo Del Fanto.
Good evening. My name is Angelo Del Fanto, 16 Jones Drive in Durbin. And actually, we signed up. I'm here on staff of the Academy of the High School. So, we are here in support of our director, Sandra Sanford, who will be making the presentation later on. Thank you.
Carolina Rodriguez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here in representation of the Nubre Latino Coalition and also on behalf of the New Britain Hispanic Community of Faith. I'll be addressing two quick issues here. First of all, I believe it was either November, December, the Community of Faith had come together to speak with Nancy Sarah and also Mr. Foren because we have found, we had some questions, some concern concerning some curriculum and some books. And recently, I found out that you guys are going to have spending around $300,000 in books for Pulaski. And I was surprised to find the large quantity of books. They might be offensive to the Community of Faith and even to the Latino community. I was surprised how many books, I mean, the quantity of books that are now being bought that deals with our history of Latinos or African-American, Native American. I see a lot of cartoons, a lot of games. I want to know how the historic demonic possession might help our kids. There's books about abortion. There's a books, a lot of craziness here that I'm surprised who made the choice to add these books. Found some of the books are against, some of the books are on the top 100 on ban and complaint on the American Library Association. So, I am surprised that they're spending over $300,000 on books, and a lot of them do not deal with the issues that we have or the historical content that our kids should know. American history, a lot of our veterans, and so on and so forth. So, I think that should be reviewed. That came on behalf of the Hispanic Community of Faith. But also, I'm going back touching the issue that recently, some of my Latinos were involved in a Zoom meeting concerning that they are searching for the right candidates for superintendent school. And I just want to make clear that the majority of our schools, as we see here, they're Latinos. So, it has to be a Latino person that needs to be the leader here. Matter of fact, I walked around right here. Mr. Alexander Ortiz, six years ago, was chosen by the Latino community. I don't need to embarrass you, Mr. Ortiz. But six years later, the Nubre Latino community and the Latino Community of Faith is asking again that he should be considered. I know that they're spending a lot of money and asking for people. When we come today, I come here as president of the Nubre Latino Coalition and the vice chairman of the New Britain Hispanic Community of Faith, saying that we do have the leader here. He has proven himself. We want him, and I think that we could be saving a lot of money while we have someone right here that has proven himself the qualities that we need here. Especially, there's no reason why we look at anything else when the majority of our kids are 60, 70, 80% Hispanos. Necesitan alguien que hable su lenguaje o noca su cultura. Someone that will know their culture, their language, and they would stand up when parents need to come to talk to them that they could see face to face so numerous close to them. I'm not asking just because he's Latino, but I believe because he's the right candidate with all the qualification, and then boom, there's a big star that he's a Latino. So, once again, I would like the Board of Education to really consider him. Sadly, sometimes the only things work is with rallies and people. If that's what it requires, I don't have a problem bringing the Latino community in here and put on a big rally. But I think that, as you guys have known me for many years, I like to be more diplomatic, and we could talk one-to-one and get things done. But if that's where we have to go, then we are ready to do that. Once again, let's consider Mr. Ortiz as the man that we need here in this community. And secondly, with $307,000 worth of books, and it doesn't cover the majority of what we need in our schools, especially in Pulaski, it's a school that's having issues. I think the art kids need quality information, quality books. That's why they deserve no cartoon, none of this other nonsense that is here. I have the list. There's big, there's 300,000. You know the books, and I wish I had a bigger staff that would go one by one checking those books out. I just did it right, just on top of it. And I found out thousands of dollars that are being worked, that are on books, that we know that it will be not only to the Latino community, Community of Faith, or anyone. It will be offensive to anyone in the community, and I wish more parents would know about these books. They will be shot. So, once again, thank you for your time. I'm on behalf of the Nubre Latino Coalition and also the Community of Faith.
Mr. Dennis Terracani.
I'll pass.
Okay. So, Mark Berzinski? Oh, okay. A lot more now. Lori?
Same.
Linda?
Same.
Brandon Figueroa?
Same.
Last one. Tatiana Machado?
I'll get up and say something. Good evening. I'm Tatiana Machado. I'm here from Tunxus Community College. I am the Business Program Coordinator for the Business Program of about 425 students at Tunxus Community College, and I'm also here to support Sandra and the Academy Advisory Board tonight. But New Britain is really important to us as an institution of higher education because you're the number-one town for us in Tunxus. More students come to us than any other town in the area. So, I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to participate, follow participation? Anybody else? One more time. We have follow participation. Here now. Item A. Attorney attorneys. Kristin, do you have any of these names?
John Dyken from Corporation Counsel.
All right, John Dyken. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
And also the interim facilities director could be invited as well.
Okay. Should we, can we do A and B?
Yes, absolutely.
I move that I'm going to say extension of A and B by New Britain Corporation Counsel's Office and the interim facility director.
Ms. Sarah, the full board. We will be discussing pending litigation of Zierko Yedep versus Board of Education and Louis Coria versus Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor. Mary Lou Manning as well. Mary Ellen. Okay, so full board. Attorney Dyken. Alejandro Ortiz. Mary Ellen Manning. Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
We are back in session. Do I have a motion for item A?
Yes, item A, motion to authorize.
Five thousand.
Second.
What are you motioning?
We authorize the settlement with Zierko Yedep.
We authorize Corporation Counsel to offer the amount of 5,000. Do you have a second? You want a second? Second. All right, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I have a motion for item B.
Motion to accept the proposed settlement.
Aye.
Second.
In the amount of 7,500.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, the motion is to settle in the amount of 7,500. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, I think we got 3,500.
That was the.
That was the first one. We're in the second one.
Right. First one was five, the second one was 75. All right, so all in favor. Everybody's aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item A, Superintendent Report. So, I'm really, I put very little here because we have presentations, and my presentation was really around our academic achievement this year. So, Kristin probably revised. There was two links. I wanted to give you additional reports. Thank you, Kristin. Additional reports. And if after we have this first presentation tonight, you still want to hear more, we can come back. We can do it at another time. We're just trying to be respectful. There's three presentations tonight. So, look through it. You'll get a presentation from cabinet members, and that's it. The only other thing I wanted to let you know that we had a really good meeting. Tayshonda, I saw you here somewhere, but you're not here right now. She's out there. Yeah, Tayshonda, myself, and Chief Shoot, we actually met last week to talk about, you know, the DARE, resurrecting the DARE program, which isn't the DARE program right now. So, we're actually, Southington has a program called Steps that we're looking to purchase that is more comprehensive than the DARE program per Chief Shoot. And so, it will be a series of lessons for our grade-five students talking specifically about drugs and that sort of thing. And so, we're looking to begin that next year, actually, to go into that for next year. And it talks about some of the topics. And so, anyway, it was a good meeting, kind of a follow-up meeting from Mallory and I. We had a meeting earlier. So, anyway, I just wanted to update you on that. And I'm going to stop there so you can see the other presentations. All right, those are the presentations on A, B, and C, right? Yep. Okay. All right. So, item B, Committee Reports. Curriculum, Mr. Kane.
Curriculum met last month, and we discussed the AP History course as well as the updated history curriculum.
Finance, Mr. Kane with a C.
Finance committee met last week. We discussed a lot of purchase orders and bid waivers that we're presenting tonight, contracts, and a donation.
Who's the donation?
American Savings Foundation for the CDO Academies.
Love it. Love it. Our policy.
So, we have some new business today around the healthy food option.
Board reports. Does anybody have any board reports?
Personnel met.
Oh, personnel, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Personnel met, and we have a short meeting. Not any items in there.
Thank you. All right, board reports. Ms. Reyes.
I was just really happy to be a part of the Read Across America, and I visited Smalley School, Ms. McDonald's class, and I really enjoyed it. It was great to see the kids having fun and to see their faces, and it was just a beautiful time. I wish we could do it more often.
Yeah. I figured you would, yeah.
Listen, I got to wear some big blue ears that I just thought were fantastical because they won and too. And I got to read to Ms. Puff's class, and it was actually about teaching a dog 100 words. And instead, every kid had every description about every animal, not limited to a dog. So, for anybody that's ever been around, a first grader, they were full of stories, and these animals had names and voices, and every single kid got a chance to speak to their favorite book and what I had read, and they got to read to each other. So, I was actually just reader support. And so, that's what made it really fun for me. Now, that was my one. So, I was in Ms. Puff's room at Smalley, and it was just exciting because you also got to take your picture in this little thing that was made out. Oh, my God, this decorated cardboard box, wonderful. So, I recommend if we can do that twice a year, that would be perfect for us to do it more often. And then the other thing, too, was to thank our wonderful transportation staff. Can I please just take a moment to send a shout-out of love to our transportation staff? For those of us who have kids that go on buses here in district, at 6:30, we got a phone call from specialty letting us know that 18, I believe, almost 20 catalytic converters have been stolen from their fleet. The most impacted were the special ed buses, the shorter buses. Four of my kids take specialty transportation short buses. And listen, that, when you hear the scared voice on the other end going, "We don't know how we're going to get your kids to school, but we will," and knowing for a fact that they did and that they were able to pull together, I can't say thank you enough to our transportation team and specialty transportation. So, for whoever's listening, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? I did want to give a quick superintendent search update. We finished all our focus groups. The last count was 13. Focus groups were held amongst the community with students, parents, teachers, admin. So, more to come. We are meeting tomorrow night to our next plans. We're hoping to start some interview process hopefully next week. All right, anybody else? No? Okay. Presentations. Item A, Midyear District Report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina DeNey, Rans Town Officer for the district. It's my pleasure to give you a high-level overview of the work that's been happening in the district over the last several months in the areas of academics and student and family engagement. I'm going to ask Amy Anderson, Laura Bulkey, Sam Stanford, and Jay Merrimott to come up. We're going to tag-team this a little bit tonight. Kristin, I'm not sure if you have the presentation.
She's getting it.
Perfect. So, we've been very busy in the district over the last several months, and we're going to take a look at some of the initiatives that we've implemented across the district in literacy. Our second cohort of elementary schools have started foundations this year. So, all of our elementary schools are now foundation schools across the district. In your data packet that is linked to the superintendent report, there is, in the presentation titled "Data Dive", there's some data comparative analysis on the two different cohorts in year two of the implementation of foundations and some of the results we're seeing. In district coaching is happening as well for both cohorts. We have 138 teachers that have been trained in foundations. It's exciting stuff. And if anyone gets a chance or an opportunity to go and watch phonics instruction at any of our elementary schools, I encourage you to do so. Learning walks have happened or continue to happen across the district. We're focusing on the Connecticut Common Core Teaching Domains 1 and 3. For any of you who are unfamiliar with the CCT, it's a rubric that the state follows around four domains. Domain 1 is classroom environment, student engagement, and commitment to learning. And domain 3 is around instruction and active learning. So, we go in specifically and look at those two domains when we walk through. In addition, the administrative teams at each building have an opportunity to identify additional areas that they would like our feedback on. And what's been great is that we've been able to debrief with admin teams afterwards and really just support them in the work that's happening across the district, but also what they have identified as their big rocks. And we take a look at trends around student engagement and outcomes. New Britain High School is running three sections of Latinos in Action course for students in grades 9 through 12, as well as our middle schools, are currently offering six sections of Latinos in Action. For those of you who may not be familiar, Latinos in Action is a program or course that is, the goal is to empower Latino youth and to lead and strengthen their ties to the communities through college and career readiness. At the 9-12 level, course curriculum has been renewed across 15 departments. CTE courses and academy courses have also started for the planning for upcoming implementation of the new curriculum that will begin in the 22-23 school year. New curriculum rollout and renewal continues at the elementary school in both reading and math. And we are currently enhancing and updating library schools and classroom collections across the district. So, there's some information about that as well. In the presentation, we've also included just some high-level district comparison data for reading for fall to winter. We saw an almost 10% increase across the district in Tier 1 in reading, as well as a drop in Tier 3. And we'll talk a little bit about more that, about that more a little later on in our presentation. Some updates for math, and Lauren, you may feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything. Illustrative math training. We have over 300 K through 5 teachers, including our T-Saw and Elle, as well as her special ed teachers, coaches, administrators, participating in illustrative math training. That's happening K-5 in both district-wide and site-based NBU. We continue to have specific math classroom visits occurring across the district in K-8 with very focused feedback around implementing the new curriculum. We also are taking a look at the alignment to equity in our math curriculum, the IM lesson structure parallels Adams-Ruddham-Hammond's culturally responsive lesson plan framework, Ignite, Chunk, Chew, Review, aligned with IM's lesson structure of a warm-up activity, synthesis, and a cooldown. So, thereby provides a culturally responsive lesson structure for teachers and students. And we also have instructional coaches focused on method implementation and supporting all of our teachers K-12. I do want to mention, it's not in our presentation, but all of our coaches and administrators have also been attending Jim Knight's coaching and training, his professional development that focuses on the role of the coach in the building, how to elicit teachers into coaching cycles, which we have many teachers across our district participate in those, and how to work best with principals and administrators around the coaching model. So, that's been really successful. Our coaches are also embarking on a coach playbook that they will be rolling out to our district. Some data highlights. I also included just a quick bar graph around our math achievement and our increases from fall to winter comparison. Again, in that deep dive data presentation, as well as the school comparative analysis, as well as the school comparative analysis, you'll see that growth by school, as well as by grade and subgroup, as well as disaggregated data around foundation schools cohort 1 and 2. So that is linked in the superintendent report. Some of the data highlights, and I do want to mention, we did have a meeting today with our iReady consultants and we got some exciting data that I will share that is not in your presentation. But the total average increase for Tier 1 for all elementary schools in literacy was around 11%, with a decrease on average around 16%. Smalley Elementary is seeing the largest decrease in the district. 10 elementary schools saw a minimum of 10% increase in Tier 1 or higher, with Holmes and Smith making the most increases in Tier 1. Total average increase for Tier 1 for middle schools around 5% and the decrease in Tier 3 for middle schools around 4%. Some subgroup data, our L reading scores, average growth in Tier 1, all of the six domains was around 6% and the overall average decrease in Tier 3 was 10% for English learners. In math, total average increase for Tier 1 was around 6%. Increase in Tier 2 was around 14% and a decrease in Tier 3 at 19% on average. And the total average increase for Tier 1 for middle schools in math was 8% with an overall decrease on average of 5% in Tier 3. Some exciting news that was shared with us today from our iReady consultants, grades 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8 are scoring above the national median based on the typical overall growth relative to the historic norms that were set in 1819. So that's some exciting news. We also have Smith and Holmes, again, largest increase in Tier 1. I do want to shout out Lincoln, Gaffney, North End, and Smith that are not far behind in Smalley in their decrease in Tier 3 as well. And the other exciting news happening with our iReady scores is Plasky, Smith, Holmes, Smalley, Lincoln, and Gaffney all scored well above the national median based on the typical related historical growth in reading. In math, we're happy to say that Gaffney, Smith, Lincoln, and North End had the largest decreases in Tier 3. Smith had the largest increase in Tier 1 growth, as well as Plasky, Smith, Gaffney, and DiLoreto scoring above the national median based on the typical historical growth that was set in 1819. So we're seeing a lot of really good movement.
I'm heating my food up because they're doing presentation. They keep providing us snow.
That's okay.
We need alcohol.
It's good stuff, it's good stuff, you know. I'd like to bring up Sandra Sanford and Jay Merrimott to talk a little bit about student and family. I'm wondering what she's having for dinner. Student and family engagement updates.
Hi, thank you for having me. So with this one, there's a lot going on. So we thought we'd highlight a couple of things. Something we're really excited about that we began this year was our community engagement team that actually meets in this room twice a month. It's exciting because we've brought in many of our community supporters, partners, the Mallory Dupreys, the Omar McDues, Housing Department Representative from Juvenile Corps, our Regional DCF Educational Advocate. And what it is, is we bring a couple of families in here each time we meet that are identified through our attendance meetings in our schools and try to offer resources and support and get them through some of the difficult challenges that they're facing. It's been great. We actually need more of it. We need more time. There's more families to reach, but it's been an excellent start. Then wanted to talk a little bit about the Tier 1 and Tier 2 celebrations and interventions that we're having in our schools, the Growth Parade that took place at Smith, I'm sure many of you saw. Lots of different things. I'm a big competition person. Healthy competition, I think, is good. We have a lot going on in our schools, some Harry Potter events, really focusing on the students and families who are showing up every day and doing the things that they need to, not forgetting about them as well. And we have a lot more coming up throughout the rest of the school year. Happy to talk to anybody about it. At the time, there's just a lot happening, but that's just a couple of things to highlight.
And I'll take over talking about some of the implementations with the FSLs that we started last year. You know, LEAP came out, as long as our parent teacher home visiting, an opportunity for our staff to reach out to our families. At the same time, we started the parent teacher home visiting model. The state also initiated the LEAP model. So a little bit of an update, we are able to establish some of the LEAP in each area. So we have a LEAP staff member that helps coordinate the training and the work to do those home visitings. Home visitings due to the pandemic have also been virtual. We're looking forward to having some face-to-face, some home visiting time, meeting with the families, but we understand we're still coming out of a pandemic. So it is more virtual at the moment, but we are building capacity. So when we're ready to roll, we're ready to roll. We have LEAPs at Chamberlain, North End, Smith, Smalley, Lincoln, Plasky, DiLoreto, and New Britain High School. What those LEAPs do is build the capacity in order to train more members of our staff to do home visiting. In addition to that, on the recommendation of talent and MIS, we started recording our home visiting practices and training. So our staff can get that off our Safe Schools platform and they can do that training at a self-paced moment. For parent teacher home visiting, it's a little bit different. They have a train-of-trainer model and as we're building that capacity as well. So every so often, or twice, I'm sorry, twice a month, those LEAPs get together at 4, 5 o'clock at night and they brainstorm how to make this better in the district. And what we shared with you today and with the state as well is the top strengths and the top growth areas. And this is their anecdotal and after their analysis comments, these are not coming from me, from anyone up here. It's actually the staff and some comments from the family in the chart. Some of our strengths are the virtual visits are a great alternative because we want to do the work, we want to connect with our families, but many families are not ready yet and that's quite all right. There is a lot of administrative support from the superintendent down to the local principals in regards to this work. There's a core group of teachers that are kind of leading the training and making sure, we can't be in every building at all the time, but having somebody in the building working with the FSLs is very powerful because they can have the collaboration and if there's a need, they can hop on with each other to do that home visit. And another strength is the PKHV classrooms, as well as the train-of-trainer model and LEAP being on Safe Schools. Very powerful because now we are able to ensure that our staff are trained in that home visiting practice. Growth areas, we're still looking for, we're still waiting for the pandemic to go away officially so we can train more staff and really kick it in gear either for the last trimester or over the summer. Data tracking with the state doesn't match our tracking, so we're working on how to simplify that, building more capacity and engaging our community partners as well in the home visit. And again, as like Jay said, if you have any other questions, we can come back and we can have some follow-up and we can give you some more detail.
This is yours.
Because I know while he was speaking, you were saying that the home visits aren't being done because we're not out of a pandemic, but you're saying that you have to provide support to a home visit?
It's actually a combination. Some of those families that are not ready for a home visit can have a virtual meeting with the staff, but there are some home visitings. And there's a tiering, we talk a lot about tiering. A home visiting is also tiered. It's a tiered approach. We have our checking connects home visit. We have our data drop-offs or our resource drop-off home visit. We have a LEAP visit, which is the governor about talking about chronic absenteeism. And we also have the parent teacher home visiting model. So it's a multi-tiered approach to home visiting within, in our structure. And that parent teacher model is about relationship building, goal setting. So there are some that are happening on the spot. There are some that are happening in person, but not necessarily in the building. They could be happening at a sporting event or after, before a, any type of event that's happening in the district or in the park, but it's not necessarily, it's not all 100% in person.
Are you able to provide me the data as far as, I'm not saying, tell me that you're meeting in the park. I'm saying before you had, I don't know, let's just use 100 as an example. As an example, you were doing 100. And now you're only doing 3. I'm not saying that establishes disparity, I'm just throwing out numbers. So I'm just looking to find out, broken down by the mixed programming that you have identified. So so far, you've got 3 that it comes to me before you go to the district, right? The LEAP will lead and there was one other one that I'm missing, but I'm saying in those 3, if you can, just to provide me some data.
Sure, I can tell you right off, the LEAP visit, there's about 650 contacts made this year alone.
You must have broken up my school, right?
We can break them down by school and there's 250 families as well within that 650 contacts that were done.
No, no, no.
And that's part of the strength.
I have a lot of information trapped over here. You just won't see it? I got you, girl. No, all I'm saying is it could just be easier for me to see broken up by school because out of all of the middle schools, I'm sorry, the preschool schools, you have Plasky, right? Where they're doing it?
Actually, every school is doing it. What I listed for you are the LEAPs. If I'm doing a home visit and I have a struggle, I need to contact someone. So there, we have LEAPs sporadic throughout the district. So when in doubt, or you need support, or you need a number 2 for a home visit, those LEAPs are available at all times. The home visiting practices are happening in every single district, from our FSLs to our social workers to our deans. That's happening in every building. But the LEAPs I listed to show that there are some leaders within the district that are supporting this work, but they overlap in the schools. So you have one person that has two or three elementary schools. And it's an evening-type event, so they need to be on call and helping out as well.
No, no, and I appreciate the work that they do. It was just a matter of getting an idea. Numbers-wise, right, because even though you would have one staff member, it's still multiple contacts throughout the district, right? Because that one person is able to kind of straddle between two schools.
And the hope is that for transition years, that is accurate, correct. A fifth grader and a sixth grader partner up to visit a family so they can help them with the transition years. Absolutely. But the anecdotal, I'm sorry, the 600 contacts is 250 families just in the elementary area for LEAP. So I will provide that data for you, for sure.
Just want me to bring it down? I wonder if you want to bring it down for me to understand? I just want to see it the same way you see it.
Sure.
Okay. And then my other question was, because I was going through as you were actually speaking, was going back to the academics update on literacy, when you were speaking, Ms. Anderson, Latinos in Action. I know a little bit about the 9-12 only because they did come on to the call as you were for the Latino X community conversation a couple of months ago.
Yes.
That we all participated in.
Right.
And I'm not saying, oh, just throwing like it all. But what I didn't see was information on the curriculum, because I know when you speak to leadership with high school and the college, I think maybe because I'm thinking middle school in here, that I'm missing it. So if you can.
Sure.
At your leisure. If you can, provide me with information on the curriculum as it relates to.
College and career.
The 6 to 8.
Yep.
The 6 to 8.
Got it.
And the high school, kind of how those compare and how we're bridging that and have been, right? Because the program has been in the middle school since the beginning of the year.
Correct.
So we should have some data to support that. So if you can, I would greatly appreciate you sharing that with us.
Can I get that for you?
Could you? Thanks.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Do you have more to your presentation?
We don't.
No.
If you have any other questions, we are done.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're done.
Item B, Ms. Mallory Dupre. Sorry. You're not ready for the presentation.
Oh, no, we're good. So I'm not going to speak much. I just want to say thank you and address the board for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. The kids are giving the presentation, so I'm going to excuse myself. I'm still here.
All right, who's starting?
I am.
Oh, okay.
All right, so real quick, the Local Prevention Council was actually established in November of 2019 and is basically a coalition model focusing on substance use and youth prevention in youth, as well as mental health support for each, for 6th and 12th grade.
So kids can still participate in it as young as 6th grade?
6th grade, yeah.
So kind of the history behind it, while we get the power, by the way, I'm Omar McDue, Coach O for both everybody. Youth Advocate for the city, football coach at the high school for 20-plus years, all that happiness. The Youth Leadership Group, as it was called, kind of started on a brainstorm by me and Mallory back in '20, right after the holidays. And we kind of got the ball rolling in April of 2020. And went right through COVID and it just gave our kids something to do, even though it was online for a lot of that. But the whole goal behind it was to teach leadership skills, which I'm a firm believer in. Also, for me personally, I worked with kids that are on the wrong side of the law for the most part of my job and I needed something to offset that. So I wanted to work with the other side of the ledger. So, and these kids are the other side of the ledger. All of them honor roll kids. I'll go, you'll see in the presentation, I labeled or I named them all, when the schools they go to, they're, they, all are New Britain residents. They all don't go to New Britain schools, but all New Britain residents. And they all attended in the Britain schools at one point in time. And each one of these kids has potential to be sitting where you guys are sitting. And that's kind of the reason behind everything. I'm a firm believer in teaching kids young and getting them while the getting's good. And these kids are going to be our next group of leaders. So Mal, if you can, hold on. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll be much quicker in a second. All these kids, I just wanted to point out, on top of doing Youth Leadership Group or Council now, they do other things. We have kids that play high school football, high school and basketball. We have kids that play volleyball. We have kids that play soccer at ASI. We have kids that run track. We have dancers. We have dance instructors at the YWCA where Annalise Jones has to go in about 15 minutes. So our kids, on top of doing youth leadership stuff, and we are a very active group, as you'll hear, they do other things and maintain the grades. So a lot of that is the help of, you know, support staff, the teachers, especially at Howells, do an excellent job with these kids and their parents. They do a really good job. So we're going to play the year in review video for you guys. It's about a minute and a half. And then the kids will be going. We have a little background. We started off with eight kids and now we're at 14. 14 is kind of where I want to stay. Right about now, we will be aging one of them out as one's graduated and will be going to the University of Egypt to study in September. So, yeah. We will have room for one more eventually, but we, let me just shut up.
It might be the sharing settings.
It's not.
It's converted otherwise because you can't share the audio.
Well, that is on our website.
Yeah. By the way, our website is mbyouthprevention.com. Please write it down and visit. Yep, it's on the pamphlet for you guys, mbyouthprevention.com. All right, guys, come on in. And you guys are up. Everybody, come on. Stand right there. Join the crew, be a family. Justin Black.
Hi, my name is Blitz.
And my name is Sarah.
All of our fundraisers are very important to all of us and they've helped us like grow our community and improve on what we've been doing as this program expands. The ones that I think mostly impacted me are the midnight basketball, which we did at Stanley Quarter Park, and the Walnut Hill concerts where we would like walk around and take anonymous interviews, well, not really interviews, they were surveys. And we would like get people's, we would get like people's ideas and we would also like see their view on how we've been doing and how we could help like prevent kids from doing like drugs and alcohols. And that's what we're really about. And at the Walnut Hill concerts, when we would sell waters, foods, candies, et cetera, we would take the money that we get and we would put it back into our like profit and we would use that to help get other things so that we can like continue expanding.
New Britain Youth has done a lot of events and we've done toy drives and food drives and we helped families out in need as long, on top of like helping the youth in our community. And just seeing my peers helping families in need really impacted me and made me want to give back more to the community.
So as Blitz mentioned earlier, we fundraised in the parks at the concerts in Walnut Hill. And at the end of summer 2020, we were debating what we should do with these funds. And I suggested investing it back into our community and growing it. So we worked with Kayla Milligan from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. So we worked with Kayla Milligan from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. And she taught us all about endowed and unendowed funds and our options for creating a scholarship fund for our community. So we decided on creating an endowed fund that we can grow and add to over time. We also decided that during the annual donor cycle, we would give to youth-centered people and organizations who most need our help in the New Britain area. We signed our agreements on February 22nd, 2021. We became the youngest people ever to have a fund with the Community Foundation.
Very good.
Our first donor cycle is coming up, and we will be receiving applicants very soon.
My Daniel C. here, so. Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm Nick Smith.
I'm Juliana Guerrero.
Okay, so as you guys heard, we kind of spread out our ways, like what we do. So one of the ways we did that was with PSAs. So we made a few PSAs on Talk Bucks Two. So first one we did was about gambling. So gamble, gambling? Yeah, gambling. It's a huge problem amongst like youth, but not only that, but just like it's good to spread awareness about the effects of it. So for our National Prevention League, we all made a video, a lot of video, about different, different substances. Yeah, substances, sorry. So for example, we just showed what we love doing. So for me, I played volleyball, and I spoke about how drugs like wasn't good for me and how it wouldn't affect me positively. And a lot of everyone else made a own video about what they did, as you can see on the website, so.
We also did another thing that we did to spur awareness is we gave counter mats to the, the 20, wait, we gave counter mats to 20 of the alcohol stores?
The stores.
The liquor stores. We gave 20, the 28 liquor stores here.
I just don't know what it is.
The 28 liquor stores here in Connecticut, we gave counter mats so they can put on when they're checking out. So the people that are providing alcohol to minors will know, well, they shouldn't be providing alcohol to minors, but to know that, well, this is wrong. Like, we're supposed to be preventing this, and we're not supposed to be giving alcohol to minors. It's only for people that, well, are older.
So we also have postcards that we sent to homes in New Britain, not just families, because we're trying to reach our greater audience. And we also have a holiday jingle that focused on preventing substance abuse with minors.
And the jingle would enjoy, but there's no sound, so. Lie.
And the video has our students and some of the activities that we've done throughout the holiday season. Also, because there's no sound, you can hear.
I think, and another important thing to add about the jingle is to prevent aware, well, to prevent awareness during the holiday season, honestly. I'm not sure if that was said, but.
Yeah.
Maybe you just went on a trip, correct?
Yeah.
So I'm Felix Dupont.
And I'm Malia Vergos.
And our section is on youth development and CATCA. So CATCA is an annual anti-drug forum that we attended in Washington, DC. On January 30th, 2022, our coalition graduated from the National Coalition Academy via this conference. During this trip, we attended a chart called Key Essentials. Key Essentials taught us more about how to improve our prevention work. It also gave us new perspective on youth substance abuse and how it affects each specific community, because we were able to interact with a bunch of different youth from across the country.
Yeah, and so to talk about, more about our youth development and our personal community. Last summer, we received a Narcan administration training with Pastor Dana Smith. He attended one of our youth-led meetings here, and he went step by step and taught us how to administer Narcan. And a few months after that, in November, Emily Rosenthal attended another one of our youth-led meetings, and she taught us about focus group recruitment and facilitation. So we started talking about hosting focus groups in order to bring more youth in our community together to talk about what's happening and the problems we face, so we could get more word out there. And basically, she just taught us how to host these focus groups, how to recruit people in our community to attend them, and how to facilitate them successfully. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll go next. So I'm not a youth council member, even though I know I'm pretty young, but I'm the prevention coordinator. My name is Taishonda Wiley. I'm the prevention coordinator of the New Britain Local Prevention Council. We are funded by a federal grant program called Drug-Free Communities. The focus of the program is to target families and youth to prevent overall drug use throughout the entire community. So that's done by a lot of the activities that we used spoke about, including working with community partners or coalition, coalition of community partners, on providing alternative activities for youth in the community at large that are void of drug use, substances. And also just educating the community on what youth substance abuse is. A couple of things I like to speak about that we've done recently and that we have coming up. We just wrapped up, well, a couple of weeks ago, we wrapped up our school survey. We did it in collaboration with the school district. It was a school survey offered to all sixth through 12th grade students. It had questions around drug use, including alcohol, like how frequently you drink alcohol, marijuana use, opioids, mental health, and even questions around COVID-19. We should have our survey results in a couple of weeks. And once we have those survey results and data, we can then use that to better strategize activities that we do in our community, something that's, you know, worthwhile for New Britain, right? Something to be on the lookout for, Saturday, May 14th, we are having an event at Walnut Hill Park. It will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it will be a large event on bringing awareness to prevention. So be on the lookout for flyers for that. But again, that's going to be Saturday, May 14th. And then the last thing I like to add is that we recently partnered with a program out of a statewide program called Governors Prevention Partnership, like the statewide task force to get youth ready for prevention. Our youth are going to be trained in a curriculum called E3, which stands for Educate, Empower, and Engage. It's a peer-to-peer prevention program for 17 lessons that educate youth on topics around alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, opioid awareness, and healthy decision-making skills. So that's communication, refusal skills, and so forth. Once our youth are in, these youth right here are trained in that curriculum, they'll then be better able to educate their peers on alcohol, drug use, and so forth. So I mean, the idea is that they don't want to hear from us, you know, Omar, Mallory, and I, they want to hear from their peers about why it's wrong to use drugs, why it's beneficial to not use drugs, and so forth. So I guess to round out what we're, why we're here tonight is just to, you know, tell you all about the exciting and things that our youth are doing. We have some pretty powerful young leaders here, and we hope that you all will keep us in mind when you're doing programs activities, such as like our, what do you call them? Our, our groups.
Our focus groups?
Focus groups, excuse me, thank you. Our focus groups. Like, we're looking for partners in the community that will allow us to come in and do focus groups with parents and youth. We have a lot of activities coming up throughout the summer, like, hey, come on out and support us. You know, so just keep us in mind and prevention, you know. We are your go-to resource for prevention. Thank you all.
Any questions?
I actually did ask for you, I did ask about the survey that I had been told by a philanthropist that her special needs daughter was taking at home. And, you know, I'm just asking really kindly. If you'd be able to provide me a copy of the
Survey questions?
Survey questions? Yeah, the actual survey.
Yes.
Because my understanding is that it came up clever, you know, just as like an online kind of a survey for them to take, and the child was finishing it at home. And if you would, I would, I can give you my email address. I'll give you a card, and you just, if you can, send it for me here and be able to just let me know if you can send me a copy, I'd really appreciate it. And then keep us in the loop as well if you have any information regarding your May event. Because religious education is actually what stops us from doing a lot of things as, the Latinos that go to St. Mary's Church. So if you do, but by then, we should be winding down our religious education classes. I can share that with the staff there as well.
Awesome.
So that way, we can get the rest of them to be able to attend.
Okay.
We can't go to the cool stuff like Saturday Academy, because we've got to be Jesus, but, you know. If you let me know.
Jesus is cool.
Listen, he's a mentor for nine to 11, leave me down with Jesus. Just to let me know, we should be done with our stuff.
Perfect segue.
And that's the list of all of our local prevention council partners.
I just wanted to ask, when you get the results on your survey, can you share it with us?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, definitely. We shared online our website, and we look to have some type of like town-wide meeting, just a community meeting, community forum, to get everyone.
We don't usually get like a part two to presentations, you know what I mean? So it's really cool that you guys be coming here tonight and then just.
Definitely. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, everyone.
Item C, maybe does not have the advisory board introductions and presentations. Are you going to sing, though?
That is a tough act to follow. I'm so sorry. Absolutely not. No singing, no dancing over here. At least not from me, but you never know with the advisory board. Thank you very much. Today, our, our hope is that we have the New Britain High School Academy's Advisory Board meet the Board of Education. And to start off, I actually would just like to invite all the advisory board members up and our industry partners. They can tell them who they are and what they do, which academy they're connected to, and the why. And then we can continue after that. So I'm going to just have you all come up, and I'll one by one. We'll start Linda.
I'm not shy. Hi, I'm Linda Scoblan, a very proud 37-year retiree from the New Britain school system. I am on the advisory board for the Academy of Public Service. Delighted to be able to maintain some kind of connection and am amazed at the opportunities that are, that are available for students at New Britain High School. Thank you.
So you said 37 years, or 37 years old?
Get your glasses. 37 years teaching in New Britain.
Good evening, I'm Mark Przynski. I'm a recently retired president of the Arthur G. Russell Company in Bristol. I am currently working part-time as the technical talent development advisor for the company, trying to make sure we have a sustainable workforce to keep our company in Connecticut. I've been advising the Met Academy since 2017, thanks to Lori. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. My name is Lori Theriot, and I had the pleasure of, of beginning the Academy of Finance with Sandra Stanford back in, I want to say 2012, 2013, and had the honor of recruiting many Academy of Finance students into the workplace, one of which will be speaking here tonight. And today, I, I have to say that, you know, venturing into the Academy of Manufacturing Engineering and Technology, because I come from a manufacturing background, has afforded me to now take students from the Academy of Met and incorporate them into businesses in the general area of New Britain and surrounding towns. So this morning, I got a call from a farming company who was looking for an Academy of Finance student. So I'll be reaching out tomorrow morning to recruit and narrow it down to three finalists. And that lucky winner will be working in a, an HVAC company and building her skill or his skill in the office. So excited to, to be part of this. Thank you.
Well, I've already introduced myself, but I'll do it again. Tatiana Machado, Tungus Community College. Been involved with the Academy of Finance for quite a while now. Kind of inherited that position. We've had multiple department chairs and program coordinators, and I'm just the latest one. One of the things that we do with the help of Sandra and everybody in the advisory board and at New Britain High School is that we are able to align courses, Tungus courses with New Britain High School courses, so that New Britain students can earn both academy credit, high school credit, and also college credit. And there's no cost to the student. And we are also able to budget through Perkins in order to get the materials, required materials, and textbooks for students when the courses are aligned. And so we're very happy to do that with New Britain High School. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Juan Berrios. I'm the Assistant Director of Operations at HRA of New Britain, Inc., but I'm also the Vice Chair and Secretary of the New Britain High School Academy's Advisory Board, and also one of the founding members and trustees of our New Britain Academy's foundation. Like Lori, I've been with the academy since its inception. I actually met Sandra about 13 years ago, and I promised her straight out of high school that I would never like accounting. But here I am. I do tax preparation. I've been running a tax program at New Britain High School for the last 13 years, recruiting well over 50 high school students annually to become IRS-certified tax preparers. And my role at HRA has continued to increase as our program has, of course, continued to increase. So on behalf of the advisory board, as well as HRA, I thank all of the Board of Education members, past, current, and future, for their, for their support of all of your academies. I also would like to thank Superintendent Sarah for believing in our vision, believing in all of us as business partners and providing her utmost support to all of us. Like Sandra, she's kind of seen me growing up as well, so it's always very interesting to kind of speak back to everybody. And of course, to Sandra and her fantastic team here behind us, who really do this job day in and day out. They deal with all of our students and help them really become future-ready. And that's really what our goal is. The goal of our advisory board is not only to support the academies and provide meaningful experiences for our students, but it's also to provide support to our staff to allow them to help our students become future and college-ready, which is the ultimate goal. So thank you all very much, and I'll let our media event go up. That's what I call them.
But you can sing and dance.
I can sing and dance. I will not do it tonight, thank you.
All right, well, hey, everyone, I guess I'm the main event. My name is Brandon Pieroa. I am a Senior Audit and Assurance Associate with Deloitte and Touche. But more importantly, I am a New Britain High School graduate of 2012. So the, the reason why I'm here today really is because I believe in the pathways of the academy. I'm associated, right, with the Academy of Finance, but I believe all, all academies are, are important because they, they provide opportunity. And that's what I was able to get through Sandra, almost called you Miss Sanford again, and, and through Lori, right? So my high school pathway is based in the pathway that the academies take. I started taking accounting courses my freshman year of high school, just because that's what I knew I wanted to do. And by sophomore year, I took another one. And halfway through sophomore year, as soon as I turned 16, as I turned 16, we met Lori and I was able to start a position in a, in a manufacturing company where I was able to learn accounting, as well as I touched upon engineering and quality and even working out in the back in an assembly. And it showed me all these different pathways that I can go, even though I'm, you know, studying accounting, it, it showed me that there were opportunities out there. And through getting that job, I was able to, you know, put myself through college and eventually land a job where I am today at, at Deloitte and, um, pretty much it, right? So basically, what I wanted to, to hammer home, right, is that because of the opportunities that, not the academy at the time, but now the academy offers, I was able to get to where I am here today. So without the Sanford and without Lori and without all these opportunities, I probably wouldn't be here today, so.
I believe, I have one thing.
Sure.
Our goal six years ago was, and it still is, that every New Britain High School student should have a work-based learning experience, right? And so we've expanded the team, we're expanding the academies, but, but that has to be the focus because we learn best when it's hands on, hands on, we know that, right? So I, I just encourage you to, to keep, keep the academies well and, and grow, right? And, and give every student an opportunity to be able to sit with either Dennis or Angelo or Jerry who's back there and Lori, right? To just give them the opportunity for that because it's critically important for their success.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I think we have, I do want to introduce the team, but we do have a video from, there's a lot of board members, advisory board members that could not make it this evening. I'm not sure if anybody is online connecting, but we do have a video for the, it's on the connected on the next slide. So today we're talking about where we started, how far we've come, and where we're heading. And, and thank you to our advisory board. This could not happen as we follow this model without the advisory board and industry partners by our side with our students collectively and collaboratively. But one more presenter.
Good evening. Members of the Board of Education, I'm Lieutenant Jason Howie, I'm the President and CEO of Bo-K Energy. We're a contact manufacturer based here in New Britain, another facility in Brooklyn. My first introduction to the Board of Ed in the school systems in New Britain happened more than 11 years ago. The Board of Ed had at that time a superintendent for the Employability Task Force to look at the graduation requirements in New Britain High School students and see what could be changed or modified to improve the employee, which I thought at the time was incredibly progressive. At that time, the outcome of the Employability Task Force, another outcome was to create the Healthcare Academy. At the time, I was co-chair of the Healthcare Academy, which has been a tremendous, amazing success, which has shown what can happen when you partner with the school system with...
Stop with what?
Most recently, I have been involved in Manufacturing Engineering and Technology Lab, which we kicked off about two or four years ago. Obviously, COVID hit us quite substantially, but the rebound has been tremendous. And again, a tremendous success. Working with Sandra and with Nancy, we've actually raised more than $500,000 of private money and also the school system has also invested its own money to create privately to be one of the state-of-the-art facilities in all Connecticut. Workforce development is a single figures challenge in manufacturing, healthcare, information technology, everything. The only way to solve this problem is how private business again partners with the school system. So I encourage you, please to find the right leadership, the next, the next generation of leadership that will continue this project. I have my commitment, the business community's commitment. The other thing that we're really working on is to live on what businesses pushing, the community colleges as well as Central Connecticut State University, so that that happens because everybody believes, everybody believes with the partnership and collaboration it's a win-win-win for all. Thank you very much.
Once again, I'd like to thank all of our industry partners and advisory board members for coming out tonight and introducing yourself to the Board of Ed and supporting our students more than not. But there's more members of our team. So before we move on into the presentation, and I have some data folders for you, there's a lot of members here that are part of the advisory board team because it's collaboration. We also have people from our district that participate in the work, so I'd like all of you to stand up and, and introduce yourself again, for those of them that signed in early. And just quickly come through and, and Mark as a, as a lead as well.
Dennis Terracani, 35 years teaching in Britain, retired 2010. Sandra keeps pulling me back, I'm still working, but I love it. It's a great, the academies are great, the opportunities are super. We've got to keep growing with this.
Again, Ian Scholz Alfonso, I'm a work-based learning coordinator at the high school. I'm retired from the New Britain Chamber of Commerce after 150 years. And I've been with the academy since 2015, engaging the kids, our students, and opportunities and that hopefully they'll cherish and enjoy and be part of. And, you know, we want to see, we want to see them sitting here at some point in teaching us, old fogies, what, what's all about. So thank you for the opportunity, but most importantly, I am a graduate of New Britain High School, class of 1966.
Is the mic working? Is it working now?
I'm Jerry Berthium. I am a work-based learning liaison at New Britain High School and I participate with the academies. Most of you may know that I was the, I'm the former general manager of the New Britain Red Sox and New Britain Rock Cats and also the New Britain Bees. And in 2017, I took a position with, thank you Sandra, with New Britain High School and the work-based learning team. And I always thought that I was going to retire as a baseball executive and, you know, really didn't realize how, how important that the work that we do at the high school is. We make a difference. And I am thrilled to be a part of this particular team. Every, everyone you see here, the advisory board, our staff, the staff that participate as teachers in our Academy of Finance, Academy of Health Science, Manufacturing Engineering and Technology Academy, and Academy of Public Service and Child Development, they really care about our students. And they make a difference and we're all making a difference, whether it's sending them out on field trips, bringing in guest speakers, doing some after-school programs with our newly formed Partner Ready CT. Those are things that make a difference within our community and with our, and with our students. And I'm not just there from eight, 7:30 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon. I'm also the assistant varsity baseball coach. So I'm on that field with some, with some students. And in the fall, I'm also the voice of the Boys and Girls Soccer Program. And in the winter, I'm the voice of the Boys and Girls Basketball Program. So although I live in Berlin, and sorry, okay? Both my feet are in New Britain along the hurricane way. So thank you so much and appreciate your support.
Good evening. My name is Mark Wesley. I'm the lead teacher for the Academy of Finance. I've been born and raised here in New Britain, went to Holy Cross School, Miss Sarah, and I, we go way back.
I was going to say, you're putting me right in your age.
Unfortunately, I didn't graduate from New Britain High School. My mother and I, we moved, but my, my father, my uncle, my grandparents root forward, my great, great grandfathers place here in New Britain. But I put a lot of pride into this city because I believe in it, I believe in our academies. I've been fortunate enough to come when the academy was started and we've seen it grow, being a distinguished academy with the Academy of Finance for a number of years now. And I'm in support of all, all four academies. I think New Britain High School is very different than other cities. We're a comprehensive high school where we're fortunate to have four academies in one building. You don't see that often. I think there's probably 25 to 30 within the country. You know, kids, they want to go to a, an academy school that's just that. Here, we're diverse and we offer so many different programs, not just in our academies. And, and that's what I really believe in. I, I think our students that we have here at, at the high school are great and, and, you know, I think Jerry said, but we want them in your seats. And that's the hands-on stuff that we do on an everyday basis in the school is, is really charitable and we want to see them. You know, I, I had Tajay as a student. I, I loved, I had Brandon's brother, Joe, as a student, and I love hearing their success stories. And we, last, last week, we had a college and career guest speakers come in. It was great to hear and see where they are. And that's what the city does not see enough of. They don't see the success that our students are having. They see the negative. And we need to start showing the success of our students from New Britain High School. And to throw a plug, I used to be the varsity coach at New Britain High School. But most importantly though, you want your hard-hitting gear, you come see me at kids' point.
All right. I do want to, I do want to say, you know, we had, we were fortunate to have Brandon here, still connected to the academies and be on the advisory board. And we create pathways, but it's up to them to take it further. You know, we, we build a system in place that they can ensure success and they take it, and Brandon's a prime example of that. And his brother Joe followed too, and, and they continue to do so. And it's exciting to see them come back and to support kids in the next, I want to say generation, but they're not that old, but coming up after that. But I also want to take, give a shout out to, we do have another alumni here, Tajay, if you'll just bear it, if you'll stand up. She is also recently, she's an alumni from New Britain High School, but recently a graduate from college who is working in the partnership office and who created our PowerPoint, so I have to give her a shout out. She is, we know our time is limited with Tajay. Her, her aspirations are far beyond working with me in partnership and she has already started her own business entrepreneurial and web design. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for that. Another great success story, so. All right. So I wanted to share, so that's who we are. We're a New Britain High School, NAF Academy's Advisory Board, introducing ourselves to all of you. But with that being said, we'd like to share some data. So in your packet, we have, so what is the National Academy Foundation model? That is a model that's, is a third-party organization that comes in and says, are you doing, sure, are you doing what you say you're doing? What is actually happening? What's working? What's not working? Every year they come in and say, what is, what is going on? So, Kristen, can I present?
Did you want me to put up your?
The PowerPoint. Yes, the next slide. So how did, where did we start? Mr. Jason Howie talked about the Health Academy, where that started at being set based on the economic development needs. What that happened is they did it, they have a great Health Academy, but it didn't follow a structure that has included the advisory board and the work-based learning. In 2013-14, in the PowerPoint, if, if it's in your packet, it looks like this. In 2013-14, when, we were introduced in 2012 to the National Academy Foundation model, the structure and the standards that it brought, brought to us. And what, in 2013-14, we applied the first NAF Academy, National Academy Foundation Academy, which was the Finance Academy, again, brought by economic development. The economy said we need students learning personal finance and they put together a structure in place. So in 2013-14, we became the first AOF Academy of Finance, became a NAF member. After becoming certified in 2014-15, we became a model academy. After a few more years, we became in 16, in 2016-17, 17 and 18, the Academy of Finance became distinguished. And in your packet, on the left-hand side of your folder, it explains what it means to be modeled, distinguished, certified, and a member. What that means when someone else comes in and audits your, your structure, your policies, and how many students are enrolled and how many of them are getting a work-based learning experience. Right behind the brochure, where there's a brochure of our academies on your left side, three languages, Arabic, Spanish, and English. And behind that flyer is the assessment structure of how we get graded. In 2018-19, the Academy of Health Sciences formed into the National Academy Foundation model and MET was born. Academies were added and they became certified. And then in 2019-20, the Academy of MET and Academy of Health Sciences became model academies. They were able to fast-track into a structure because we had one in place with the Academy of Business and Finance that was already a distinguished model. As the fourth academy in 2019-20 arose, that is our Academy of Public Service, with two pathways in it, first responders as one and education as the other. At the moment, still in its infancy stages and to be very transparent, we are, that academy is being audited for a quality review by the National Academy Foundation on Thursday. So what does that mean? How do we get assessed? The, the National Academy Foundation model, thank you, has four elements. We talked about tiering before, we talked about how the state looks at different structures. There's four standards that we get evaluated on, Academy of Development and Structure. Do we have the course offerings? Are they in sequential order? And is it open enrollment for every student? All of those matter and we get graded on that. Curriculum instruction, is it relevant? Is it rigorous? Is, is it culturally responsive? Again, is it articulated with our universities, our local universities? They come in and they look at that. Our advisory board, by far the best advisory board in the state of Connecticut, is New Britain. Hands on and we have the best work-based learning team behind me as well, to ensure those students take what they're learning in the classroom and into the workforce. It is a continuous improvement cycle. It is always evaluating, assessing, and continuously. There are the, of the four elements, the next graph, the next one just kind of shows you how many of the academies have reached certain elements. I stated before, we have two academies that are distinguished. The Health Academy is very close in a model environment and the Public Service Academy is being evaluated this week. I'm talking faster and faster. And the next slide actually breaks down all the standards and assessments, but I'm happy to tell you, your packet has that. So if you want to know exactly what standard we're getting graded on, within those four elements, it's in your, it's in your folder for you on the left-hand side. And that's all the fun stuff right there. The green, the, the green is four academies, four elements. And with the next slide, please, I'm talking fast, is, thank you Juan, brought up that we have an executive committee that formed a foundation, a 501(c)(3). So what that means is students can benefit from the money that's raised in a 501(c)(3), a foundation that was established. With that being said, we are raising money and we have, you can join Amazon Smile. Go ahead and do the QR code right from the screen and start shopping Amazon Smile for the New Britain High School Academy's Foundation.
Check them. Probably, it's probably right up there.
I'm sorry?
Because I do the Amazon shopping, Amazon Smile.
Oh, nice.
Check the name.
I will. And, thank you. And I wanted to share, not all of our advisory board members could be here today, but we did have, we do have a slide that represents all the companies that are on our advisory board, from field trip to speaking series to work-based learning internships, all of the like. Everything that follows the standards for the advisory board expectation is, is part of that role. And these are our industry partners. I talked really fast. I think I did, right?
Wow.
Any questions? I do have to say, as I wrap this up, I've been in the district for 20-something years. That we've been ups and downs of career tech add. I came in as an accountant. We've had leadership that has eliminated our electives and we've had leadership like superintendent that had it flourish. Hands and mind on learning was part of the plan and part of the vision and there's no way, if we don't have a leader, that believes in hands and minds on learning, our economic development, and the support for academies and career academies, that we would be, we would be, we would not be where we are today. So I just wanted to talk about that. Anyone else?
Any question?
First, I have to say, really support the pathways as far as what the opportunities gives to our kids. I agree with everything that's been said about that. Just looking through the assessments, I noticed in two of the academies, the internship completion was a little, one of the lower scores. I was just wondering if you could speak to that and how to improve that and support students as far as finishing their internships.
Absolutely. So right off the bat, it's a Health Academy. That's why they're modeled, not distinguished, because it's really difficult for our students to get into the healthcare industry. We're very fortunate because our advisory board, many, a few years back, had gone to, for the labor board to do the manufacturing side, but we are not yet there in the health industry. What we are able to do this year is the CNA program, when they're getting their clinical hours, count towards work-based learning. So I, I don't want to get ahead of the game with the, the Health Academy becoming distinguished very soon, but I do foresee it because that was the one thing they didn't even have when they began 10 years ago. And as we're evolving and we have to change labor laws to allow students under 16 in the certain areas of that industry to get that content related with work-based learning experience. The... The Public Service Academy is under quality review. So it doesn't count as of yet, because it's a four, it's typically a four-year cycle. You become a member, because it's on the onset of 50 students per grade level, and when they graduate is when you get that evaluation. So if I, if we start as a freshman year, you don't have any students graduating, so they're not NAF-tracked, and they don't have the work-based learning, so you can't have that completion of distinction.
Thank you.
Could you talk a minute about NAF-tracked, so they understand, like, how that benefits kids beyond?
Absolutely. So NAF-tracked is a third, not, it's, it's a little bit about what we do by ensuring our students are ready, but it, it gives a stamp of approval on their resume for our industry partners and our national partners, like KPMG, I don't know where, and Xerox, that if, if a student comes in and says they are NAF-tracked with a stamp of approval, that they get the benefits that we provide in the high school, like, they, they will get the mentorship, the compensation, and during college. What that means is, a student has to get, have three to four courses passed in a content area, and I'll jump back about 10 years, those are concentrators. What we knew in Perkins Grant was a concentrator. But now, if a student has three to four courses in a pathway, they pass all of them with a culminating project, and they do their 120 hours compensated work, then they become NAF-tracked. And they actually graduate with honors or distinction in our graduation, and we have a separate ceremony and a graduation for them. It is the next level. It's, it's allowing our students to have something, something in addition to graduating, a diploma, when they cross that stage.
And Traveler's Edge, too.
Traveler's Edge is another partner that we have. That's been around, phenomenal partnership. They offer, Doc Ferron, if anyone went to CCSU in management, I'm talking maybe 15 years ago, Doc Ferron started with Travelers and the Concap. As they, Travelers formed a scholarship program for students that graduated in business and finance, but ventured into a little bit of engineering and MET. And students, they have, they, they pay for, it's a pro, scholarship program, and they pay for students to have four years of college at UConn or Central, studying in a specific pathway. But more importantly, they do what we do, in the sense of, they provide tutoring, mentoring if they're struggling, compensated internships, so every year, they travel through a different part of the Travelers organizations, which is a large amount of different pathways within, under that umbrella as well. And they provide them that support beyond, and then hope, most of them actually stay at Travelers and have a very successful career beyond that. It is, it's Traveler's Edge, Empowering Dreams Through Graduation and Education, Edge, that's what it stands for. And it started years ago in seventh and eighth grade, and as our academies are flourishing, they're able to, we're able to compete, and I, I think Jay said this earlier, we get competitive, in the sense, so there's, it's Hartford, it's a 10 slots, but we have to share those slots with other schools from East Hartford, Hartford, and if, there's another, a NAF Academy. But we fight for those spots all the time.
And we can serve all of the year.
Correct. Anything I'm missing?
Thank you.
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 Entertain like a two-minute break in between presentations. Yes, fine, perfect. We'll be back in like two minutes. We are back in session. Thank you for that little break. So we are at the consent agenda. We would like to pull off M, as in Mary, those are the library books, and U. So that grand total was, for those books, was $70,000 and $45,000. Anything else wanna be pulled off of the consent agenda? Give you a minute to review. Ms. Santana, was there anything that you wanted to pull off the consent agenda that would, off the top of your head?
Off the top, I wrote it down, I circled it.
We are pulling off M, as in Mary and U.
Just make sure the social studies curriculum, the curriculum committee's not on here. Am I missing that?
I do not see it.
Sorry. That was it, yeah, questions. And Mike in the umbrella.
Did you say Mike in the umbrella? Anything else? All right, so consent agenda, A through L, N through T, V through BB.
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 Okay, go ahead.
Is all approved. So I will entertain a motion for item M, as in Mary.
Second.
Motion to approve purchase order for library books in the amount of $45,000. All, discussion.
Was pulled off for, did it pull up, right?
Yes.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Mr. Kane.
Just, there's thousands of those on here, so it's a lot to look through. But is there someone here who could just speak to?
I can try.
Concerns that I got from the public participation?
So I was in the hallway for the public participation. So I did not know what the questions were. I did email and, or text Kristin Hilton, and I'm happy to get that information to you, but I don't have answers for you right now, and I'm gonna have to listen to the video to the, for the, for the very beginning comments, I'm sorry.
I think also there was some, there was two different items. I think the concern was with what fingers, like, the last, this item M is.
Right, that has some question marks, that's one of these.
Those are the other orders that were for across all media centers when we came in and kind of shared the leading process and how we cleared, there are some older ones and bringing some newer ones, and we did a presentation on that. So that was really around, as M was, as opposed to the, the orders for the books, like, there's so many letters, I'm trying to find the one first.
So M and U have been pulled up. So right now, we're talking about just M for now?
Right, so we have a, we have an annual library book budget of $45,000, and, and we typically do about a per pupil calculation, and then look at the number of pupils at each school, and then that's approximately what we allot, right? Other than Chamberlain, which we've discussed before, so we've.
Jefferson.
Jefferson, excuse me, with the public library, Jefferson. So, so then, you know, Kristi looks through newly released titles, things that students are interested in, et cetera, and she, with the help of the library assistants, assembles a list through ballot, and that's, that's what the $45,000 is. So it's, it's allotment across the schools.
And, and I think the concern that was raised was making sure that there's a balance. So for example, if you present one side of the, and non-abortion, if you have abortion was mentioned, for instance, as a book title. So if there's something that's brought up in an issue, that's a controversial subject that both sides have presented, especially the, the Christian coalition, that was the concern, the Christian coalition and churches.
Excuse me, I think they also mentioned demon.
Demonic possession.
Well, I've been going through this list since he came here, and the closest I can find to anything to do demonic possession is Demon Slayer, which is a very popular anime title. So I think some of the books here, they might have been thrown, because I'm recognizing a lot of this from my time tutoring kids with Epic and other resources. So I have not a problem with any of these books here. I do see quite a bit of books that are both controversial subjects, and I scroll through, I see the color arguments of books as well. I feel it's responsibility for us educators to make sure both sides present it, but you gotta know the good and the bad. And I don't want to set a precedent of censoring any books. I look to here, I'm very pleased with the selections here, I have no problem supporting them, and I would be very, very hesitant to remove any books in here, because it's controversial. And I don't want this board to take a stance of removing any books, because somebody might be misinterpreting a title. If they have a problem with a book, then when that child, if a child checks out that book, they can talk to the child, but we should have an opportunity for that child to at least read for themselves and make up their own mind.
Yes, sir.
All right, so that was item M. All right, so, any further discussion on item M? All right, all those in favor of approving item M signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. All right, item U, I will entertain a motion.
Moved.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order for library books for Pulaski Middle School Media Center in the amount of $70,000.
I, I move.
Thank you.
Wholeheartedly.
All right.
Was I moving too hard? Jesus, I just.
I think, Mr. Kane with a C, this was your discussion point. I don't think there was discussion on item M. This was the discussion, item U, that you don't wanna censor books. So are there any further comments?
It's a preliminary discussion.
He was just warm enough.
Yeah, of course. Okay, I'll do it again, for real.
I can't find a single book here, and I've used a lot of these books in teaching students over the last 10 years. So I can't see any book here that's controversial at all. I do see that present both sides of the issue. For example, I see books here talking about nuclear power, and I didn't see none talking about COVID again. I see books about COVID. I see books on education, careers. I don't see a single book here that could be considered objectionable. And again, it's not our place to censor a book.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I was not super clear. I didn't hear, I heard demonic, and that's, that's all I heard.
The only book in here, both lists have the word demon in it, is Demon Slayer, which is an anime book.
No, he did start off with the word of worship.
Even that one, I can, I looked at it twice.
Wait, 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 I'm just.
Wait, hold on, one at a time, one, one at a time, one at a time. So, Ms. Riz.
Sorry. There are some, you know, some titles that I could see that maybe some religions might find controversial, but at the end of the day, we're not in a church, you know, and there's, we're representing all religions, we're representing all backgrounds. And like Mr. Kane said, if the parent has an issue with a book that a child checks out, then they need to take it up with the child.
Thank you. Mr. Kane.
And I agree to Mr. Kane's point, not talking about book censorship, but I think making sure that there's a balance. And that's all I wanted to talk, have them talk about this, the fact that when we buy books, it's not just one-sided, we are buying both.
Understood. Ms. Santana.
And just to clarify, because that's exactly what, that's what Carmelo was really, I don't know, we didn't sound too formal, right? But that's what he really was speaking to, was just the balance in the list. And he didn't see it identified, but at the same time, I can see both sides of the argument, you know what I'm saying? So it's not, it's not being A or N, it's not, it's not that.
Always abstain, right? Because if you're in the middle, you can.
No, no, I'm just saying, I heard what he said, and I heard the passion that was in his voice, and I heard what his point was, which was really, he didn't see the balance. I didn't see where the balance was to a title of abortion either, but that's just me, and I'm always looking at things from, it's terrible, but a medical point of view whenever I see a medical procedure being mentioned in a book, so.
And I was a little, I don't wanna say I was lost, but at the $300,000, because between the two, it's $70,000 and $45,000.
I don't know.
Unless I missed something.
Maybe there were other book purchases that he was adding into.
Maybe.
I'm just saying.
Possible. Maybe, okay.
It's actually up to 70 on the offset chance when they put together the book list. Some things, by the time they actually place the order, are out of order, so it would go to the next book in line, so it won't be $70,000, it'll probably be closer to $45,000, $6,000, $8,000.
Just out of curiosity, is that 70 per school? Or 70?
No.
No, that's Pulaski, it's just Pulaski's putting in requests, the Commissioners Network School.
No, no, I'm just saying, so like, let's just say, I don't know, Smith, I'll use another example, so let's just, can Smith order $70,000 worth of books?
No, Smith is one of the schools that's part of the $45,000 order right now.
Okay.
Pulaski has some Commissioners Network money to spend to enhance their library school board at that specific school.
So I didn't know if it was per school broken down, so like, 10 elementaries can each order $70,000.
No.
No, 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 I'm just throwing out numbers, I'm just saying, it's like, there's 10 schools you can order $1,000 worth of books.
One of the things you mentioned, too, is this, that, as you remember from the, from the library presentation, that, that many resources are used to vet these sources, right? This is not, you know, one person going on the internet and saying, hey, that looks like a good book, and throwing it out of the list, right? There's, there's a lot of different recommendations and sources that are used.
I just, I wanted to add that Pulaski's on the list, as they are Commissioners Network School, and the funding that's approved by the state is to use for this purchase as part of the plan. That's why it's just Pulaski versus all.
Smith was another school identified that was on the Commissioners Network as well? No, no, not.
Smalley.
Smalley, as a Commissioners.
New Britain High School, Pulaski, and Slade.
Any other, Mr. Kane, I see something's going.
No, I'm organizing myself.
Any other discussion on this one?
I think it was candid at the beginning of the meeting, it's very tall.
I know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? All right, nine one. All right, item A. What a perfect timing. Entertain a motion to approve the 2022-2023 district-wide calendar. Somebody literally just messaged me about this. That's why I asked, I asked Kristin. So, is there any discussion?
What does it mean by in review in all these sections here? Interview, interview, interview?
No committee review? Sorry.
Interview.
That's the balance.
Oh, sorry.
So I believe those are the dates for the conferences and parent conferences, end of, end of marking periods, those things will be added after. This is just the calendar, again, year, end of the year, vacation days, holidays, that kind of stuff. So, so we'll add all, those are not dates where there's no school, those are dates where there, there may be evening events or half-days for conferences, which will be added after.
So those asking, the first day of school is August 31st. But, any discussion?
Because we can't see any colors.
Well, you get color later.
Well, thank you, but you have color now.
You can pull it up on your, pull it up in your packet.
It's really the no school and school holidays that are the main things in this.
Yep.
I do have a problem with October 10th, though, the name we're calling it. What is it?
October 10th.
Indigenous Peoples.
Indigenous People Day.
What did you suggest they call it?
Well, I, I'm calling it Italian traditional, it's like for calling it Columbus Day.
Oh, the what?
I've got a problem calling it Indigenous People Day.
I was just gonna say, I believe it was a policy, so we could, I don't know, can you move to ta, I don't wanna table the calendar, right? Because people tried to plan, right? People tried to.
Yeah, no problem with heavy day offs, it's that part, but if it's a policy, I'd like to, you know, we could directly be at a future policy meeting, renaming it back, calling it Indigenous People Day. I have a problem with that.
It's in the policy, they've, they've voted on it.
Right. Yep. So we could definitely.
We'll change the policy if you have the votes, yeah.
Yeah. We could definitely bring it in for another day in policy, because I do believe it is a policy.
I'll be checking the policy.
You're not 100% sure?
I'll be checking it. My computer wasn't working, I'll be checking it right now.
All right, so, aside from changing the names of holidays, is there any further discussion on the 2022-2023 school year calendar? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstentions. All right, if you care, it's. Item B, I will entertain a motion for board action to certify that the district will implement the healthy food option and allow food beverage exemptions.
That one's over here.
Can you see?
You want my glasses?
Item 6B.
That, 6B?
6B, and here's the.
I need a second.
Exact word, I gotta read the exact.
I gotta read the exact word.
Oh, the exact word, sorry.
Yes, gotta be. Consideration 1, healthy food option pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 10-215F. The Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutritional standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Discussion.
Does this apply only during school hours? For example, say, the kids want to have a bake sale after hours or before school starts? Is that allowed?
It covers all fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by school or non-school organizations and groups.
How about concession stands for the sports games and stuff like that, too?
Everybody.
Yep. And you want to explain why? Why this is important?
Not put you on the spot.
It's important because, well, I guess financially speaking, we get 10 cents with every reimbursable meal we serve. So if we're serving 10,000 meals in the school district every day, that's a lot of money. But it's the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, so there's, they want to ensure that, you know, we're serving kids healthy food.
Well, I can understand that part, serving their meals, the official ones, but I know it takes away some of our fundraising activities for the kids, bake sales, concession stands, all that stuff's a major money driver for the kids. And if we want to understand the policy, we're taking that away from the kids.
The exemption, part 2 is the exemptions, right?
Right, so there is a second section that we have to vote on that includes the exemptions. Yeah, but I have to read word for word.
Is it two different policies or one policy?
We approve one, and then you exempt stuff, that's the second consideration.
Oh, gotcha.
So, everything that is not exempted, and then in the sec...
Well, they could do it after hours, then.
So let's read the policy, like...
Okay, do you want me to read? I can read it for information purposes, and then we'll vote on the first and then the second.
Do you have to take a vote on item 1? All right, so all those in favor of item 6B, consideration 1, healthy food option, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Then, the exemption for food and beverage items. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sales to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-21Q, 221Q, of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend, the sale is at the location of the event, and the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 days after the end of the official school day, location means where the event is being held.
Wait.
30 minutes.
30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Before to 30 minutes after, it says. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official...
So at 12:01 a.m. to, for example...
2:30, or 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock p.m.
Yep.
Okay.
When can I set up my table and sell ice cream cookies? That's all I want to know.
3:01.
Saying. All right.
Any discussion? No, I don't think, there's no, you can't amend it.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nobody's gonna deny that one.
I have a question about the first one. You're saying that we get 10 cents for every meal? How do we find out how much we made last year?
Oh, that's in your budget book.
Yeah, but does it break it down? I didn't see anything work.
Yeah.
10 cents per meal, is it personal? I don't know.
Yep, it's cumulative, too, because we haven't done anything, so anyway, yeah. Okay. Item C. I will entertain a motion to approve 140 production court lease.
Motion.
Any second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kane, or Mr., yes, Mr. Kane and Mr. Ortiz, please enter the podium. The box. Approach. Ms. Santana is our discussion. Why don't you go through it?
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, on the clock, this is a, it's really a 10-year lease. The lease terms are for the first five years, and then it's like six, 10, and then it's 10, 20% ICP. Initially, when people were back in September, I know we have new board members here in September, the cost without lease for the district annual lease was about 170,000 dollars. So you'll see it's part of the lease right here. Year 1 through 5, or your second page.
Where did your right go, me with my board?
You can look at the lease, but then it's like a change.
Second page, thank you.
Yes. And then nothing's changed, 170,000 dollars. The estimated cost on the operating cost is somewhere about 2,082 cents, which is additional for 55, 60,000 dollars. So in the first five years, the estimated cost, which is real estate taxes and so forth, it may go up, but it's based on a percent. So that building itself, it's a 100% building, there's another tenant there that occupies 57%, 57.4%, will occupy the other 42.6% space. So right now, the estimated cost for that is somewhere around 55, 60,000 dollars. For the first five years, if anything stays fixed, the annual cost for the district will be about 175, 177,000 dollars. That piece may go up a little based on the real estate taxes in Britain and some other costs. The second five years, the lease is 127,000 dollars, so you'll see year 6 through 10, that's 127. If you look at now, no dollars, if anything goes up, the annual cost for that would be somewhere about 180,000 dollars. So that's just the cost of the lease. There is, if you, the one thing that was important for myself in going through the lease itself was, you know, we don't expect a termination. I wanted to make sure there was a termination agreement in there in case we find out the building is not suitable for this operation. So initially, the lease was a 10-year lease, the 10-year, you know, two, five-year extensions, there was no termination, I insisted to get termination. We believe the building's gonna be fine, so there is a termination agreement within the first two years. Part of that agreement is a payout of 90,000 dollars from the district. We do not expect to use it, but I want to make sure it was, because the worst thing I want to do is have the district have a 10-year lease, own the facility, if we cannot, it would be way to run, I'll be gone, but you'll be here. You come back and say, you know, this guy over here's costing us 2 million dollars for coming around and using it. So that's my concern, I don't think that's gonna happen. But we have a way out if it does happen.
Please forgive me for asking this question. But am I reading this lease correctly? Like, we are responsible for anything HVAC-related?
Yes, we're, yes.
Is that a normal...
Well, there's gonna be, yeah, there is gonna be equipment that we're gonna be adding on. So if you look at the shell of the building, there is gonna be equipment. And that's gonna be up.
But that's... Hold on, where is it? Hold on.
Well, I'm thinking, too, it could definitely be refrigeration equipment, my mistake.
Yeah, that's absolutely, yeah. I mean, you gotta remember, too, we're talking about refrigeration equipment, dry storage, there's gonna be some units that have to be placed on that building. So when we look at that building, that building right now is a shell. That shell's gonna have to be built up.
I'm looking under item 7, repairs. Tenants should take good care of the premises, obviously the fixtures therein, and the heating, ventilating, air conditioning, plumbing, lighting, and other systems exclusively serving the premises, and it's sole cost and expense to make all repairs and replacements there, too, and when needed, to preserve them in good working order and condition.
So when we're looking at a building itself, if there's some equipment in that building, for the most part, we're gonna have to install that equipment ourselves.
That's not how I read this right now. Sorry.
Don't you worry, keep going down.
I negotiated rental contracts when I was at AAA, and it was the same thing. We respond for any plumbing, heating, fixtures within the four walls. So if we want to have a toilet, for example, sink, kitchen, we have to pay for that. That's part of the rental agreement. The piping leading into the...
Yeah, the piping in, coming in is covered.
Right, but because we were making modifications within the four walls, the company was responsible for it, so that's pretty standard.
There will be material modifications that we have to make, I can't tell you a dollar on this.
No, this is repairs, this is on specific item 7. I'm not talking about when we bring in a refrigerator, if the refrigerator breaks, yes, we own that. I'm talking about item 7, period.
I understand, yes.
Okay.
I mean, this is a large operation.
Do we get the option to do an inspection, sorry, Kane? Do we get an option to do an inspection before we sign this lease?
No, we, no, that's why we bring an architect, that's why we bring an architect in, because he can work with us to make sure the building is...
That part I got a problem with, that's what we went through at Pope John Paul. I'd rather do an inspection first.
Well, we knew what we were getting into at Pope John Paul.
Yeah, but even so, I'd rather we somebody look it over first before we moved in.
Okay. Ms. Santana.
What are the alternatives to this site? I'm just, as I was looking through this, which by the way, I'm still Rick Lauren, that I didn't get this until an hour before, at 5 o'clock in the morning.
I was trying to force the attorneys, I have it by Friday.
No, 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 I'm not blaming you, trust me when I tell you, Mr. Kane, I am not pointing the finger at anybody. It's like, it's, we're, if we don't say that you should be handing this to us sooner, because oftentimes, when we start a discussion about something like this, we start from a place of we've been discussing it. I could be discussing the names of my kids, but you wouldn't know how medically fragile they are until you meet them. The reality is that we're still talking about documents that we should have seen in advance. With an hour to play with, I sat down with just a few pieces. I did start with there, because it really, on paper, looks like we're going to be responsible for everything. So in the back of my mind, I'm going, all right, let's change the, let's just start back a little bit. What are the alternatives to this particular site? Where else have you looked? I mean, what?
There is an alternative. You know, the alternative that we talked about briefly was a discussion about Palaske. That really wasn't an alternative. We know what's going on in the state of Connecticut with school construction, so I don't really think that's an alternative. When you look at Palaske as a site, it's not an alternative for various reasons. One, it's not an alternative based on the neighborhood that's around there, bringing in large tractor-trailers in the front of the building, doing it in the middle of the driveway. We have kids, we have families here, you have buses, or you have transportation leaving the back of the building to the neighborhoods. You know, when you look at that site, it really is not a good site. For, no matter what site in the Britain, for any schools in the Britain, none of them are really good sites. I mean, you're gonna be going up to the neighborhoods, they're gonna have tractor-trailers, double tractor-trailers loading to the site. That site over there is an industrial site. If it's not gonna impact neighbors, that's what those, that area over there, John Downey Drive is. I mean, it's industrial, it's gonna keep...
I don't know, my old office was on John Downey Drive.
It's the location you want to be at, you really don't want to have it at a school.
Well, I looked at both sites. So I did look at the Palaske site and all of the data that was in there, and I actually agreed with the plans and didn't see a problem with it. And plus, they had already had, all of the studies already had signed off on it. It was actually the last component, was the traffic study. And that one had been signed off on it a couple of years ago. I'm just saying for the...
Let me clarify, when you talk about signed off, you're talking about signing off what you think you know. When we found out later on, the food service fund would not be able to support that site. Those funds could not be used for that. So initially, the discussion was, we felt that the money could be used. That discussion's over.
Right.
So no matter what Palaske costs, that's gonna be in the city of Britain 100%, along with the state, has nothing to do with the food service fund.
Correct, so all I'm saying is, is that me personally, when I looked at it, I didn't see a problem with it, but here we go. Again, taking a step back, looking at it from the outside and going, here you go. As if I didn't know anything, I just want to be able to say. So did we exhaust other options? I mean, at this point, we're...
I think I'm following you, and I think I follow what Mr. Kane is saying. We went through the whole, we went through the architecture, went through all the studies, we went through the traffic study.
In a year, we haven't gone through this topic.
But the state will not pay, we cannot use that money in that economy.
Hartford, and this got hit on today, that they found out some items that they were told that were reimbursed by the state are not. So they're on the hook for a lot of renovations.
Right, so, and we don't want to get in that boat. So I hear what you're saying is building that, no, we did not bring it to the city to say, hey, would you fund this 45 million dollar building? We did not.
Again, looking at it from the outside in, I'm looking at the fact that we're not gonna be on the hook for this amount that's listed right over here, where we called our attention to, page 37. In addition to taxes, we're on the hook for the taxes to this property.
So, Mr. Kane.
So, in commercial rentals, you frequently have, am I correct in understanding, you frequently have lease agreements where you have a square footage rate plus utilities and taxes? Yes. This is a fairly normal commercial lease.
We don't own the building, so of course they're gonna pay taxes on it.
Just look at the numbers, I talked about the annual leases, 170,000 dollars.
I had more than an hour, I didn't look at the numbers.
The annual operating cost, which the real estate is sold worth is 60,000 dollars. Now, when you're paying a landlord 170,000 dollars, you think that landlord's gonna pay the other 60,000 dollars pocket? That really means your annual lease would be 57,000 dollars for a 20,000 square foot building. It just doesn't make sense, and why would they, why would they lease that building out? I mean, so there's costs, they're saying, here's the building, you're gonna pay me 170,000 dollars annually, and by the way, you're gonna pay the operating cost, because it's your operation. So when you have the HVAC system, heating on, you're incurring 10,000 dollars a month, they're saying, you and the other tenant are gonna split that differential. We're not gonna pay for that, you gotta understand that.
I understand a lot more than I would.
Hold on, hold on, so, I will tell you what I am completely 100% stuck on, and if anybody can help explain this to me. The repairs of HVAC, not stuff that we bring in, not the refrigeration units that we bring in, in the building, are we actually responsible? Is that a normal contractual procedure to pay for? I don't...
I believe it is, I mean, you think about this as a long-term lease, it's...
I understand, I understand all that, and I understand anything that we come in, okay.
But, yeah, we, if anything else.
We will, we'll take all the, that stuff is gonna go to production, so, all right.
I mean, right now, we're sitting at a fund balance of 12 million dollars. I mentioned last month, this money's gonna go back to the state, the state's shorting it. There's no doubt about it.
I got you.
There's already talk that, when you look at a food service fund, you should only maintain a fund balance of up to 25% of your annual revenue. The annual revenues for the food service is approximately 4 million dollars. So the state's already been tutored last year and saying, you know, you're supposed to maintain 2 and 1/2, 3 million dollars, you have 12 million dollars. Now, we can't use those funds to offset the operating budget. You can only use those funds to help community service, your culinary, which could be a kitchen. We talk about the improvements to the school. There's gonna be money left over to basically improve the school's cafeteria. Every year, we're propping. When you're in this district right now, the last couple of years, we've been propping about 2, 3 million dollars every year, minimum. So we have to take that 3 million dollars and invest it back into the food service. And if we can't invest it, which right now, it's really hard to invest it back in to make a benefit for the Britain, we're gonna give it back, so I'm not, you know...
I'm totally with you. So, Ms. Santana, really quick on the contract, I'm just saying really quick.
Actually, it's, no, 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 I got you, I got you, I got you. No, I was thinking the same thing, but I, okay, so here's my question. Why can't this, I always do like this through you. Then, what is stopping us from sending this through to our SBC and having them review? Because they have the expertise.
SBC, SBC, I'm not here to say, you know, but basically, there are, SBC is a city committee for school buildings. This is not a school building.
But it's gonna be used for school, maybe I can't divorce...
More the operations side, it's not a school project.
Food services, Mr. Marino, sorry. It's food services, Mr. Marino.
How much of the money in the fund is gonna be able to cover this, the property, and what is gonna be required with it?
Well, right now, if you look at the annual cost, the annual cost, let's face it, $200,000. So the annual operation cost would be $200,000. And you think about the fund is, is $12 million.
Plus the outfit, you know, I'm talking.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna find out. That might be several million dollars, might be $2 million. I don't really know. We don't know what that cost is. But once we make an investment into the building, you're right. If it's $2 million or whatever it may be, we're still propping here, we're propping $2, $3 million a year. So if you, if you think about it, if we're propping minimum $2 million a year, next year, we're gonna be sitting at $12 million, we're gonna be sitting at $14 million. And a year later, it's $16 million. So this is just gonna be, I don't know, a bucket. We're still profiting. We need to do other things with the cafeterias.
Right. So there's $12 million in there now?
Yeah.
All of the renovations and the rent would be covered under?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, they'll be covering it all. And the thing is, then the plan is really, we gotta start doing changes. You know, one thing, when you look at New Britain High School cafeteria, New Britain High School cafeteria, in my opinion, needs a lot of improvements. I think everybody will look at it. You look at Slade and Pulaski, the same thing. And you look at the elementary schools to an extent too. But all three of those cafeterias really need to be overrun. By building this kitchen over here or doing something else, that also allows you to basically take New Britain's operation of Pulaski's and Slade and say, hey, for this time period, if you know, renovate these cafeterias, we're gonna renovate them. And we can, we can cook over there. And we can send their food over and actually change those cafeterias to be more modern. And at the same time, we can actually do the other schools. It's like we talked about Pope John Paul being that swing space. That's what this cafeteria can be. It can help with this swing space. We can really make changes in those cafeterias. I think if anybody went to the schools and you saw some of these cafeterias, they're not, they're not good. They're not, it's not, it's like a learning environment for students. You see your students going in a classroom that is dirty and that needs to be cleaned up? We can say the same to our cafeterias. It needed to be a friendly space for students.
I don't, I'm not sure anybody's like denying that, right? Denying how we use the money. I will let my concern go, and I just don't wanna get into the Pope John Paul part two, where everything in that building falls apart, and then we have to like rebuild the whole building.
An architect, an architect will be coming in as well too.
And that's to double check and make sure everything is accessible and it's appropriate.
I still just don't, I don't like what's under repairs.
There's language in the, in the contract that says, we can terminate if we don't find it feasible.
Okay, you're right, you're right. It does say that. Yeah, all comes out of that.
So one thing, you definitely do have to spend the money.
I agree.
That's the number one thing. But more importantly, it's just a much more accessible place for our kids and our, to give good housing. So there was, I just wanted to read this so that everybody understands what we're talking about here. The tenant shall take good care of the premises, the fixtures and the apertures within, and the heating, ventilating, air conditioning, plumbing, lighting, and other systems exclusively serving the premises. And at its sole cost and expense, make all repairs and replacements thereto, as, as and when needed, to preserve them in good working order and condition. Then the next sentence is, if tenant requires additional HVAC capacity, any such new HVAC shall be at this tenant's sole cost and expense. In the event that any existing HVAC unit requires replacement due to obsolescence, the landlord and tenant shall share equally in the cost of the replacement. So it's like, there is a little bit of HVAC in this big warehouse.
We're gonna add more.
And we're gonna add more. If the stuff that's there now wears out, we'll share the cost of repairing. That's what this is saying. It's.
Okay. I didn't read that. I read that with the air conditioning. I didn't read it with the lighting and all that other stuff. So if everybody else is comfortable.
One of the things that came up today, that they changed some language to termination and talk about the sewer lines, that it's feasible with the sewer lines and all that.
That's in there. I'm okay with that.
I said to our attorney, I called him up at noon time, I said, look, you know, what is that? I said, are we talking, you know, $10,000, are we talking $10,000, $20,000? So that needs to be specified. So they specified $20,000 in there because I was concerned that we're gonna walk in there and somebody might say it's feasible based on our, my opinion, but not, might not be feasible on somebody else's opinion. I wanna know what that is. If it's a huge cost, that may be something that we look at and we'll talk. And we have to walk away, we walk away, because that may not be feasible, some water, some. So they put $20,000 in the discussion. We don't know what the cost is. There may not be any, there may not be a reason to do it anyway, but they brought that up.
So let's just say we wanna get a divorce.
I wanna get a divorce.
Just saying, just saying. Put that out there. We'll get a divorce from this property.
That's in here.
Just saying. Okay. But you still owe $90,000 plus six months. You have to give them six months notice.
That's a normal, that is a normal, there originally was nothing in there that just, we couldn't get out.
Couldn't possibly get out.
We couldn't get out at all.
Yeah, originally, it was, it was nothing. They put $220,000. That was the initial proposal, it was $220,000.
Yeah.
And I know one reason why they're looking for it. It has something to do with they have an agent, they owe a piece of the action to them. So it was making sure the agent got, her share. That's what they, they used. So we actually brought the lease down. You know, my, my personal opinion is, we're not gonna try to back out of the lease. We're gonna do our best by doing architectural study and so forth and go forward with it. But I wanna make sure we have an out.
Are you currently occupying this space now?
No, we haven't signed the lease yet, but no.
No, that's okay. You said the same thing about the cameras when you were.
No, 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 we're not.
Okay, wait. Here's my question though. So have we done any environmental studies? Or are you deferring to the architect to do environmental studies?
Yeah. You see, you know, the whole thing with this whole lease, I mean, your questions are good. I mean, we could have, we could have, we could have, and went through a whole architectural study, and it was in the occupied. But the landlord themselves is saying, wait a minute, I'm not gonna give you six months to do a study on my building. You know, I have other people that can rent it. So this was our way to say, hey, if they're gonna use it, we're pretty sure we're gonna use it. I'm 95, 99% sure we're gonna use it. But it gives them a way to rent the building to us, but it also gives us a way to walk away.
So if we find out that there are environmental issues there? Can, no, no. Without paying the $90,000?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
No. You gotta, no, how are you gonna know if there's environmental issues if we don't pay? We gotta, we gotta pay somebody to do it.
And you gotta actually have possession of access to the space.
Yeah, that, trust me, yeah. Okay.
Why nobody told us this before I, I'm just like. Yeah, but I wouldn't owe you six months plus $90,000.
Yes, can we call the question? Go on.
Yes. So, all those in favor of approving the lease at 140 Production Court, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sorry. I know.
Don't be sorry, don't be sorry. You and I both like last time.
I know. But hey, eight to two, motion carries.
Go to the same.
Yes. One other time on record.
Okay. Item D. I can actually hear her, yes. Item D, I will entertain a motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver for wellness partnership with YWCA. Any discussion? All those in favor signify, oh, Tony, did you hear?
No, no.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those against? Motion carries. Item D, I will entertain a mo, oh, sorry, item E.
Motion to.
Accept or reverse motion?
No, so item D.
Finance, yeah.
I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to accept item E.
Discussion.
Instead of giving them a dollar raise, let's at least make it $2.
All right. So for those, the recommendation is to increase the crossing guards daily rate from, to $40 from $39.
At the last meeting, the finance committee meeting, I gave you a second letter here. And the finance committee asked for $1 influence, what it costs. So hopefully you see the second letter, it tells you what the annual cost of the dollar is, 2.6. Over four years, a 26% increase, $2, you'd be $5.21 or 1.3% annualized. And, you know, $3 would be 7.7 or 1.9%. So I gave you $1 influence.
Oh, I'd rather it's $2.
Motion first.
There's a motion, I was gonna say, there's a motion to amend. So the motion to amend is to approve $2 to $41 from $39. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
So the amendment's passed, now we gotta go on the whole thing.
Right. So now I'm gonna make the amendment to item D to say approve purchase, sorry. I don't even have my glasses on, I can read it. Recommend to increase the school crossing guards daily rate to $41 from $39 for 2022, 2023.
There's already been a motion and a second, meaning it was amended, so now we just, yeah. Yeah, it's already been made, amended, so now we gotta go on the whole thing. So we don't have to read motion.
Just rephrase to include the.
You already know any parliamentary.
Well, I'm telling you.
Well, that's why I was just trying to reread it. Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to add an item to the agenda?
What's that saying?
No.
Sorry.
This is a motion to. Yes, can we have a second? This is a motion to add an item to the agenda. The superintendent is requesting the ability to carry over 15, her remaining 15 days of vacation days that she was not able to take during the summer of 2020, 2020, as we were preparing to reopen the schools. That was just an incredible amount of work and not possible to take the vacation time that was owed to her. So I'm, would like to add that to the agenda and then make the motion to adopt it, yeah.
I think that's fair.
So we're motioning to put it on the agenda, so all those in favor of putting, having the item to the agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, the motion is?
Motion is to approve carrying over 15 days of vacation for the superintendent.
Second. There's a second discussion.
That 15, was it COVID and you reopened the school? So yeah, that's fair. Would you be taking that for the June 30th or?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't think I'll be taking 15 days over once. It's never been the case, you know. Put a day here and there. All right. Any further discussion? No? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have a walk-in, so I need to make a motion to accept a donation?
Motion to add.
A motion to add to the agenda. All right. Make a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $10,000 for track and field program. From? Link's, is it from Link's timing system?
From George.
Oh, George. Oh.
Lisa's sitting out in the audience. She's been waiting.
Please come, tell us about the donation.
Uh, no, he's gonna bring a lot of football teams. He puts a lot of work into that stadium. He basically was key designing it. So the next step is to just a usable timing system. Currently, the track and field team outsources and they pay about $3.50 a meet, just to have them eat time. So we have about five meets. So I think that's one for us to utilize. There's not many in the state, so I know last year alone, we ran into some issues with not having availability on meets, as most track and field teams can be on the stadiums. It's also potential, we'd like everybody to talk to Mr. Croco about having some of his tech staff, earning some extra earnings, and hopefully you've been getting some high school kids out there running it at some point. So save us a little money if we purchase it through the factory.
Will there be any recognition for him at the stadium, like to give a plaque or some kind of saying?
Put his name on it? Yeah, something. We, I was gonna say, we think it's on the. Yeah. Well, I think it's something creative. Maybe him in his shorts.
No.
There are some old photos of track and fields in this.
Yeah, something. We'll, we'll figure out something.
I need to root him out, I'm trying to talk now.
Is it, like, is this service wall? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
So we need to go over that.
Oh. All those in favor of accepting the donation of $10,000? All those opposed? All right. Motion carries. I do have one item, and this is parliamentary procedure. Maybe Mr. Kane. We had an item on the agenda for curriculum for the bees, for the beehives. That really did.
The small?
The beehives at Smalley. It was on the agenda for curriculum. It never made it onto the consent agenda for tonight, but it's under the, it's under, yeah, it's under 7,500, it's the 5,000, but it was on curriculum.
So it does, but it doesn't need a bid waiver?
It does need a bid waiver. Just do it. Okay. It was a question, I didn't wanna leave it off.
Everything else made it on though.
You showed us the hive.
Oh, the other curriculum?
Yeah.
Yes.
Live animals. We just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, just right where there were live animals sort of coming into the building. Yeah, no, that's fine. Cause I really wasn't sure. All right.
We knew it was under, but.
Entertain a motion to adjourn? Yeah. All right. We are adjourned.